Hello from the Crawford Family Forum in Pasadena and welcome to a roundtable between the two candidates hoping to represent District Two on the Los Angeles Unified School Board. I'm Kyle Stokes, Senior Reporter covering K-12 Education for KPCC Public Radio and for laist.com. We are a member-supported nonprofit news source for Southern California and we rely on donations from you to sustain our journalism online, on the radio, and in live events just like this one. So become a member right now at laist.com/donate. That's L-A-I-S-T dot com slash donate. This conversation, this live conversation is part of KPCC and LAIST's Voter Game Plan, which is, that's our newsroom's guide to help you make an informed vote ahead of the November election. And you can read that guide right now at laist.com/votergameplan. And this document, this series of posts, not just one document, it's a series of voter guides to three dozen different federal statewide and local races in LA County, including the two school board runoffs in the LA Unified School District. And these school board races in LAUSD are so important, they are the most consequential school board races anywhere in the U.S. LAUSD is the largest school district in the country with a directly elected independent board. That is different from places like New York, Chicago, DC, all of these places, the mayor controls the school system there. So the people who are ultimately responsible for whether a half a million young people in LA are learning are the folks who are on the LAUSD Board. Each of these Board members represents a different geographic area of the district. So Board District Two covers roughly East LA, Boyle Heights, Pico Union, Historic Filipino Town, Highland Park, Echo Park, and parts of Los Feliz. And now here are the candidates to represent that district. Maria Brenness is the Executive Director of Inner City Struggle, a community organization on the East Side that's long been active in education as well as the violence prevention and community health spaces. And Ms. Brenness is the parent of two LAUSD students. Also with us is Rosio Rivas, a deputy to current LAUSD Board Member Jackie Goldberg. And Goldberg represents the neighboring Board District Five. And Dr. Rivas is an education policy researcher by background and also the parent of an LAUSD student. So before we dive in, quick word about format here. Our goal is to avoid the rigid format of a traditional candidate debate here. Instead of, you know, quick 60-second soundbites, we want to expand a little bit here. We want to give candidates the opportunity to explore a smaller number of topics a little more deeply. So we're going to give candidates about five minutes each to respond to the questions that we talk about here. I'll pepper in a few follow-up questions along the way and also ensure that both candidates get equal time to respond, as well as a fair opportunity to respond if anything should come up between you two. But there are going to be two debate-ish things that we do. And one of them is that we're going to have you do closing statements at the end, but we're going to start with brief opening statements. And so we're going to start with Dr. Rivas. And let's start with your 60-second elevator pitch answer to the question, why are you running for the LA Unified School Board?
Well, thank you. Thank you for that question. And thank you for this opportunity to be here and introduce myself. I am Rosio Rivas, pronouns she/her/ella, and I'm a proud Mexican immigrant. And I was raised by two hardworking, humble parents who raised my brother and I to the best of their ability. And I attended LAUSD public schools and I thrived in our schools. And I went all the way to continue my passion in education to the ivory towers of Columbia University. And it is here at Columbia University where I gained the policy experience and the key understanding of how we can have real transformative change in our public education systems. And so I have had this vision, this vision of having a compassionate and anti-racist society that has developed through our public schools and our public institutions. And this is something that we can do through a transformative policy change in our institutions. And this is something that I have been aiming to do for quite a long time. So this is why I'm running.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brenness?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Maria Brenness and I'm proud to be a candidate in this important race. And I am running as an education advocate, an LAUSD parent, and a longtime community organizer that for 20 years has pushed LAUSD from the outside to be more equitable and responsive to the highest need communities in our district. And right now, there are deep challenges facing LAUSD in regards to academic outcomes, school funding, creating welcoming and safe environments, and mental health challenges as well. And so my track record shows that I can bring people together, young people, parents, families, to solve some of the greatest challenges facing LAUSD at this time. So as a Board Member, I would continue to champion equity, exacerbated by the pandemic, and bring people together to do that change.
Thank you very much. All right. So just a quick word before we get into the questions, that if you have questions for the Board members, we have some time for some brief Q and A at the end. If you're streaming on laist.com right now, there's a chat box just to the left of your, to my left, wait a minute, the left side of the screen, right? They're pointing both ways in the back here, on the side of the window, that you can put your questions in. And we'll leave a little bit of time to have some quick answers to those questions toward the end of our conversation. So first question that we want to get to, the first topic I want to start with actually is the acceleration days, which, you know, as you both know, LAUSD Superintendent Alberto Carvalho pushed to add these extra four days to this year's school calendar. And attendance on these days is optional for students and teachers, but still the idea is that these four days equal extra time in the classroom for students who've been struggling the most since the pandemic hit, more opportunity for these kids to work with teachers and catch up. At least that's the idea. But there's been controversy over when to schedule these days, or, you know, whether this is a good idea at all. And I want to ask you both about this because, not only because the school board is literally voting on this like as we speak right now, but also because in the middle of this is a super serious issue of whether students who made little academic progress during the pandemic are doing enough to make up ground now. So the question I want to ask to both of you, and let's start with Rosio, is does LAUSD's acceleration day plan reflect a sound strategy to help students who've fallen behind? Is it indicative of a broader, of a good overall strategy to help students who've fallen behind? Yes or no?
I think that concentrating on four days alone is not going to bring our students up to the level that they should be or that we want them to be. I think it's, the supports have to be throughout the school year. We have to look inside of the classrooms and look to see where are the supports we really need to provide our teachers, our administrators, and all of our staff. So it's looking within each classroom, see where are the areas you need more teacher support? Are the students affected, need mental health supports? Do we need PSWs, PSAs? So each, each school is different and we need to look at each individualized school to see what supports they need. And that money that was going to be allocated for the acceleration days need to be distributed in this fashion inside the school. So every single day, we're addressing the learning support. But above all, what we really need to do is address the mental health stress and anxiety and that it's really permeating throughout our schools and our classrooms. Every single person, employee, school community, individual is stressed. They're feeling anxiety and they need supports. So what we need to do is we need to survey our schools, we need to survey administrators to address their mental health needs, not only of themselves, but of their students as well, so that we can provide that extra support that they need, so that our students can focus on learning, so they don't have to be stressed or depressed of what was going on at home. We also have to address the needs of our families. So if our families have home security, if they have food security, if they're taken care of, then we have students who are able to learn because their families are being taken care of. So it's a holistic way of addressing their learning loss rather than just four days.
Does that holistic strategy involve the acceleration days? Like, do you count acceleration days as one of those ways that the district can be, like, addressing those needs, those broader needs that go beyond just the grades on the roster? Are acceleration days a good addition, a step in the right direction? Or is, does it show wrong thinking on the part of the district?
No, it's not wrong thinking. I think it would, we do need accelerated days, but they have to be planned. They have to be purposeful. And we have to bring in the inputs of the teachers and the administrators to see how it's going to look in their schools. So we have to plan it out so that we have targeted students, like, these are the students that need help in these accelerated days, and to provide those supports and those programs for those students. And then there's other students who need maybe more hands-on projects, more challenging projects that can help them as well. So it has to be targeted supports for each student and disaggregated by depending on their needs.
Just super quickly, I mean, like, are they better off as the Board is considering doing today, scheduled over a break period? Does that, would that make it best for, if we're going to target these days at specific students, if that's the idea, is winter break a better time to do that? Or during, you know, kind of what critics have said, it's a random Wednesday, but, you know, the, like, the other side of that story is, these could be days when they'll actually be at school and they're more likely to attend rather than during their holiday times, which is more effective?
Well, I mean, we have to address the fact that, yeah, there's some families who do leave during the holiday break. So if we can able to talk to these parents and address, it's like, well, we will need your child to be here for an extra two days. And if it's not accommodating to them, we have to accommodate to our parents and their needs, and also our teachers. So there may be a Saturday that they can come in, or maybe one day out of the holiday. So I think it's a case-by-case way of addressing the needs of our individualized students. But no, if we can add a day in the holiday, we just have to work with our families and make sure we're communicating with them and the purpose for that intervention.
Maria, how about for you? Do you believe that LAUSD's acceleration days reflect a sound strategy to help students who've fallen behind?
Well, I understand that the acceleration days were based on the Superintendent's strategic plan. And he lays out, you know, five key pillars for uplifting all of LAUSD and our students. And one of the pillars, as it relates to academic excellence, I think the Superintendent, it seems to me, was trying to align a strategy and a specific activity for how we achieve academic excellence, which is needed. And that's the primary role of our educational institutions, is to ensure our students are learning. I think where the Superintendent could have gone further is ensuring that there was authentic collaboration and coordination and planning with school leaders, with educators, with education workers, with parents, with students, to figure out together, how do you implement specific strategies to get us to academic excellence? Because one of the other pillars he's laid out is collaboration and coordination with all stakeholders. So I think it's important moving forward that as big ideas are discussed, that in the implementation phase, there is true inclusivity of all that are impacted. What I do agree with as well, within the pillar of academic excellence, is accelerated learning and setting high expectations. We know that our highest need students have been adversely impacted by the pandemic. There is a challenge with the widening gap of academic challenges impacting low-income students, many who are facing homelessness, foster youth, English learners, our Black students as well, these special education students. These are students that we have to focus on. Resources have to be equitably distributed to meet these students' needs. But I truly believe we have to set high expectations, but then create the infrastructure in our schools to help students meet those high expectations, lowering class size, having more intervention and tutoring in the classroom, social-emotional learning, and enhancing the after-school program so that it is aligned with what's happening in the classroom. So to meet high expectations, even with the challenges that LAUSD is facing, is paramount.
So high expectations are one thing, but extra learning time is sort of another thing. That's the heart of this plan, is extra time, additional minutes and seat time. Is that a good strategy? Is that, is that, you know, I'm not sure whether it's part of the strategic plan, but is the Superintendent thinking about it in the right way if, to say, let's put these kids in seats for longer?
Well, I see that the goal was to achieve academic excellence, you know? More time in the classroom is absolutely essential. But I think we can get creative. And I think by listening to our educators, our parents, and our students, we can get to those solutions. I think after-school time is a resource that can be aligned. So many of our highest need families rely on the after-school time for childcare. And I think we can strengthen it with academic enrichment, with tutoring, with additional supports, music, arts, social-emotional learning. So it supports the goal of meeting high academic expectations.
So I want to, I'll give both of you a chance to respond to this before moving to the next thing, because you said something that I think is also, it reflects something that both of you said, which is that, you know, you felt that the Superintendent, you know, did, you know, he could have, where he could have done better, I believe you said, is having more intentional conversations about just what this plan was going to entail before he set out to do it. So just to play, you know, I want to ask you about that, because just to play devil's advocate, you could say, like, someone needed to stand up and say, this is the plan, this is what we're going to do, you know, I'm an executive leader in a huge organization, we've got to, we've got to just, we've got to do it, this is an urgent problem. So, you know, I'm saying we're adding four days, you show me how it's going to happen. You know, so what do you say to that? And I'll get, I'll get to you as well, Rosio, with your thoughts on this. But, I mean, in, you know, 60, 90 seconds, tell me your thoughts on that. Like, why should he have to, like, have authentic conversations? Like, he's the leader of this big system. Shouldn't he have the right to say, like, this is what I want to do, extra seat time, go?
Well, in my experience in being an education advocate with, within LAUSD, collaboration, coordination, especially with those that are most impacted by decisions made by the Superintendent, made by the Board, is absolutely essential in order to have impact and to have success. I mean, I remember very clearly when I was part of the movement to make A to G, the 15 courses needed to be eligible for a Cal State or a UC mandatory for graduation. That was a collaborative process that included the voices of students, families, of educators, all coming together and saying to LAUSD, we need to raise expectations and we need to make A to G a right for all and create that infrastructure. And today, because of that, because of that collaboration with school leaders and with community, the district is in a better direction. More students are graduating, more are going to college. And there's so much investment in LAUSD, and that's a good thing. And I think moving forward, the Superintendent needs to leverage that in planning and ensuring that we have the strategies we need to increase academic excellence.
Dr. Rivas, same question to you. Did Superintendent Carvalho overstep here? Or is he doing what an executive leader should do, saying, this is where we go, extended learning time is what I want, you guys make it happen, and that's appropriate? What do you think?
Leaders, educational leaders, yes, have to lead. That's why they were in there in place. That's why he was hired. And he has the skills, the ability and the knowledge to manage a huge district like LAUSD. However, as we all know, education is political. We live in a society where we all want our children, the best for our children. And so we have parent advocates, we have community advocates, we have racial and ethnic advocates who are advocating for their communities. And so there is a lot at stake in our schools. Our schools are part of our communities. We are invested in our schools. And so the decisions that the district or the Superintendent does has clear impact on the lives of our students, of our administrators, and of our teachers. So yes, it is clear to have a theory of action, to know what is a problem, what we want to address, what is our focus, our goals, and our mission, and how we will carry it out. However, throughout this plan, we need to infuse the voice of the people. We need to infuse our communities, because every single community, from Los Feliz to City Terrace, Oaxaca, Boyle Heights, Highland Park, Chinatown, they're all different. They all have their own cultural and linguistic and societal needs. And so we need to let know, the decision that I'm making, how is that going to impact you? So we need to hear from our communities. We need to hear from the people. We need to hear from our indigenous communities, from a Black community, from Latino community, to see how, this is my idea, how is that congruent with what you need? And how is that congruent with our teachers and our educators? So we need to have a district that is infused with the voices of the important stakeholders in every decision. So yes, you have a plan, and let me give you, provide you some feedback on that plan.
Okay. So just want to again remind our audience that there's a chat box. We're watching your questions. We'll pick a few to do for a quick Q and A session toward the end of our conversation. Want to switch over to another topic, and that is test scores. Last spring, most LAUSD students took standardized tests for the first time since the pandemic. And the newly released top-line results, of course, showed that the district's overall scores in both English Language Arts and Math went down. What I want to know, and what I hope you can inform voters about, is how you think about those test scores. So let's start, just to, just trying to remember who started the last question. I think it, I think it's to Rosio now, to, I think you start, Maria started the last one, so I'll send this question first to you. That question is, how much do standardized test scores matter? How much weight should we put on those test scores as we're assessing whether LAUSD is making progress to help its neediest kids?
That's a very good question, because our entire public education system, be it the district or the charter school system, really has been forced to focus on standardized testing, on scores. So we have a society that wants quantitative. The quantitative is telling us what we need to do, which is, yes, we need to assess where our students are, where we need the supports. And that's where we need assessments. However, we also know from research that standardized testing are very biased. And we also know that standardized testing also are metrics for the socioeconomic status of students and the educational level of the parents. And so this is what really standardized testing are assessing, is the economic status of our students. And so time and time again, we see this. So the new, these new scores that have come in, we need to start from scratch. We need to use this as a baseline, because, and we can compare them to 2018, 2019, which was the last set of scores that we have.
You're saying we can compare them?
We can compare them to see where we were then and where we are now. So we need to use these assessments to understand where are the supports that are needed. But what we really need to do is really get to the students who are below basic. And we need to target those students, to bring them up. And we have to look not just at third grade or fourth grade, we have to have percentage increases that we want to reach for every single level. However, as I've mentioned before, our schools, our, our school communities are really dealing with the post-pandemic stress and anxiety and depression that's going on. Unless we are able to address that and address the needs of our communities, homeless issues, food insecurity, health care and security, then we can really begin to address the academic needs of our students. Everything is interconnected. Our schools are the microcosm of our society. Whatever our families are facing, we're going to impact it in our schools. So if we know the case, then that means that we need PSA counselors, we need PSWs, we need all of these supports in our schools. And once we have a truly funded and fully staffed school, we're going to start seeing those test scores changing.
So the fund, the kind of holistic view that you take, and we've talked about this during our interview, you know, it was a couple weeks ago, the holistic view that you take, how do we measure whether that's getting better? Whether we're actually, you know, making progress to offer those services to those students? One would argue that, like, the bottom line measure that a school needs to worry about is, like, is that kid proficient? And if their mental health is in a better state, isn't their proficiency rate going to be, to be better? What do you think about that? And if it's not proficiency on tests, what measures would you point us to to say, like, this is how we know that what we're doing on the ground is working?
Well, we have different metrics. We can, the main metric is speaking and serving our teachers and our administrators. Since I've been working as Policy Research Deputy for Honorable Jackie Goldberg, I have been going through all of our schools and having deep conversations with administrators and teachers, our SAA's and our office technicians. And they know exactly their families and their students and what they, what they need. And one important model that we really need to implement throughout the district is the community-school model. Because this model, it really integrates and connects with our families. We know them by name basis. We know what they need and we can connect with them. And if we can implement community schools, organic community schools that comes from the grassroots, then we can really begin to address these needs. So the metrics are serving our schools, serving our teachers, finding out the real stories of their schools and providing them with the resources that they need. So we can understand, collecting data from all of our schools and seeing the patterns. And once you see those patterns, then you know what are the systemic issues, what are the societal issues, and what are the things that you can immediately change, and what are the issues that have to be changed through policy or through resolution. But those metrics have to come from our schools. And the community schools model is really one of the metrics that we can use to really address all of those issues.
Maria, on the issue of test scores, how much do standardized test scores matter? And how much weight should we put on those scores as we assess whether LAUSD is making progress with its neediest and potentially for this behind students?
Yes. So what I want to share is, you know, in my 20 years of work in the community, particularly the East Side community with highest need families and students, this has come up, the issue of test scores. And what I have heard and agree with, that test scores are one important measure, but they are not the only one. And for parents and families, especially highest need families and who send their children to our highest need schools, they want to also see multiple measures. You know, English Language Arts outcomes, math outcomes, reading outcomes are essential. I don't think we can underlook that by any means. But it's also important, in the work that I've done, to look at multiple measures in measuring student success and the impact of our schools on our students. And, you know, in the work I've done with Inner City Struggle, for a very long time, we have pushed LAUSD to focus on graduation rates, to focus on college-going rates, and to focus on measures as it relates to students feeling included, safe, and welcome on their school campuses. So I think in this time period, that is very challenging for so many families, especially our highest need, it's vital that LAUSD, our Superintendent, look at multiple measures and invest in ensuring those multiple measures are having an impact. We have to create the conditions outside and within schools for students to succeed. So looking at class size, looking at services that are made available to our families on the campuses. That's why I have been a big proponent of wellness centers and have been successful in getting more wellness centers built on our East Side High School campuses that are of high need. So I think it's a combination, and I think that's what families expect, learning, academic rigor, but also environments that support the whole child.
So you're saying that in addition to things that we can measure in the school, the, the things that we should be measuring to know if we're making progress are, are we lowering class sizes? Are we adding more resources to a school campus, like a wellness center? And that's kind of, those are among the metrics that you'd point to? And that's kind of, those are among the metrics that you'd, you'd point to?
Because ultimately, we want to see more students graduating. We want to see more students being prepared for college and careers. So along the way, LAUSD has to set benchmarks for students at an individual level and at an aggregate level. And what I'm saying, I think test scores are one measure, but there's also the measures around social emotional learning. Are students being supported holistically? And are we creating the conditions so that students are successful across the board?
Just because you bring up graduation rates, how are we supposed to compare those numbers at a time when, you know, graduation rates were up nationally by huge amounts? Because, you know, we, we let a lot of people pass with Ds and, with, with lower grades, I, I believe it was both Ds and Fs, that, that students were allowed to pass with. How can you, how can we have a comparison of those numbers and know that that's, know that those numbers are headed in the right direction, or know that those numbers are going in the direction we want them to go?
Well, that is a challenge for LAUSD in terms of that data gap. But what I would bring to the Board of Education is pushing our board and our district and our superintendent to continue to have high expectations. And as I've mentioned before, invest in the infrastructure so that students can meet those high expectations. One of them is graduating with the A to G requirements. The aim is C or better. And I think it's important as leadership to articulate those high goals for our students.
While we're talking about school environments, let's, let's move to another topic about how many children are in that environment right now and talk about LAUSD's enrollment. And so I'll shoot this question first to Maria. LAUSD's enrollment has declined steadily for two decades now. A school system that once served 700,000 students in 2002 could serve less than 400,000 next year, according to district forecasts. And a lot of this decline, of course, is driven by demographic forces arguably that are beyond the, the school district's control, like a declining birth rate. But my question to you, Maria, is, is, are these the reasons that families that are fleeing LAUSD that are within the school district's control? And what are the changes that you would push LAUSD to enact to reverse this trend in test scores?
I think this issue of declining enrollment and the issue of attendance in our schools is of urgency, of great urgency for Board District Two in, in particular, given the impact of the pandemic on our communities, particularly our highest need communities and families and, and students. And given the impact of housing instability and, and housing insecurity impacting so many of the families I work with at Inner City Struggle. And for me, it would be critical, if elected, to declare a state of emergency on the issue of enrollment and engagement of our students and their families as it relates to LAUSD, to have a call of action at the district level and direct our, our superintendent to allocate and deploy resources accordingly. We need a all hands on deck strategy as it relates to this issue. We need to make sure that our highest need families that are not engaged with LAUSD regularly or have completely disconnected, that they're found. We have an amazing PSA counselor component in LAUSD. We need to expand it, and we need to direct those resources equitably where the, the challenges are greatest, to help our families find support, to create plans of action, and connect them to resources they, they may need, including, you know, related to housing, related to food insecurity, and building partnerships with the county, with the city, with community organizations. So I, I think that's critical to, to addressing the enrollment challenges and, at the same time, creating more in district options to attract LAUSD families to engage in, in our, in our district. You know, in district options like magnet schools, like K eight span schools, like small learning academies, pilot schools. I think having those types of options shows our LAUSD families that LAUSD is committed and engaged to, to finding the interest of, of their students and creating the learning conditions so that they can thrive and succeed.
And that's an issue you hear a lot of, is about the, the availability of choice options. On your, on the, the idea of declaring a state of emergency around engagement, I mean, you know, there was a big, at the beginning of this school year, Superintendent Carvallo, you know, went out with the cameras and went out to school, you know, to, to students' homes. And, you know, he, he's assigned his cabinet, a couple dozen students each to call and check in on things like this. And it's been a big PR push. This is also something that the district has done. I mean, this goes back to, you know, Superintendent Butner did, you know, much the same thing. He brought cameras to people's houses. So how do we know that it's going to be different? How do we know that there's going to be something that, what does a state of emergency look like that isn't being implemented right now? Because we're talking, we're on to two superintendents that now have gone on talking about how engagement is their, is their big thing.
Well, that sort of strategy has to be consistent, and it has to be targeted equitably. And we have to invest in the resources so that we can reach more families and provide the ongoing case management that is required to address their particular challenges. And this is work I'm, I'm very familiar with, you know, during the beginning of, of the pandemic and through the pandemic, Inner City Struggle has been all hands on deck, working with students and families to make sure they had the resources they needed to stay engaged in virtual learning, whether it was laptops, whether it was Wi-Fi hotspots, whether it was cash assistance or support with connecting to testing, or later on, the vaccine. I know what it takes. It takes relationship building. It takes investing in trusted messengers that can do the work of engaging families. And you have to be consistent, and you have to invest in that strategy. And I would call for an expanded effort that is, that is highly invested in so that we, that the ongoing engagement is something that we see day in and day out.
All right, Dr. Rivas, for you, the same question. Are there reasons that LA, that families are fleeing LAUSD that are within the district's control? And what changes would you push LAUSD to enact to address those issues that are within their control?
This is a very important question because the district is very important in our city and in our families. Not only has it, the district provided jobs for countless of employees, and they've been able to raise families. Every time I go and I canvass, I meet these employees who tell me, you know, I retired, I've worked for the district for 33 years, and my child also works for the district. My daughter's a teacher and so and so. So I know that there are families that district has been their home. And it is too large to fail. And we have to make sure that it's thriving and that there is real connection between the district and our communities. And the reason a lot of our communities, our families have left is because they have felt that disconnection. They felt excluded. I was one of those parents when I felt that, you know, this is what my child needs, and I was like, you know, disregarded. And time and time again, I've spoken to many parents who they've also felt that they were not listened to, they did not know who to go to. So they end up just taking their child to another school or going to a charter school. And this is a problem because this is why we have to reconnect this district to our communities. And the way that we do that is by really looking at to why they left. And we have to look all the way from our early education to our adult education departments.
I just want to jump in there and ask, like, what is it that they're not hearing that, you know, when they say they don't feel listened to? What is it that, that they say, that you think that, that you hear them say, that they talk about? Was it, my teacher didn't give me the time of day, or what was it?
Well, for instance, there's one mother who let me know that her son was coming home with bruises. And when she would go and inquire to the school why she was getting, why their daughter was getting these bruises, they would say, well, we don't know. She probably fell, and put it on the parent that it was her fault. I was like, no, my child came here, and then she wanted to have a clear understanding what was going on, and she got no response. And then so she had to take her child because she felt her child was not safe. Another parent also told me that she knew that her child needed different special education services because she spoke to another parent who her child was getting that, and she wanted to know why that was not an option. And so she was inquiring, inquiring, and she did not feel that she was being heard. So these are time, these are just small snippets of all the, all the stories that I've heard. So I, I know that they are, within our special education department, we need to see what are the issues that our parents are leaving and not satisfied. But apart from that, in order to bring enrollment and really bring the vibrancy of this district is by looking at the positives. And so we have great schools. We have high schools with waiting lists. For instance, Bravo Medical Magnet is a school that is bursting at the seams, but they have not been provided with the attention that they need to really expand their school. And that is one option that, that is a access, that is an expansion of the district that is, that is being neglected. We have MACES schools, we have LACES schools, we have different specialized enrichment schools that, that have waiting lists. So we need to expand this and bring choice. We also have dual language programs. And this is a dual language program is, it needs a, a more invigorated infrastructure, needs supports. We have parents who really want to enroll their children in, in dual language programs in various languages, in Tagalog, in Armenian, in Arabic. We need to really look at the linguistic and indigenous, Sapotec, and Mayan. That's one area that I really want to extend. And the Pico Union West Lake area is dual languages for those, for our families and our immigrants there. So these are the things that I'm looking at expanding. And I have this experience, I have this policy experience on how to do that. And I've done the research, and I know the needs in, in order to expand dual language, to expand our magnet programs, and to maybe sure that we have choice. But above that, what our city also needs is adult education programs. We have our immigrant communities and they want to learn English. My parents met in them, met when they were taking an ESL course back in the seventies. My mom went to citizen courses, so she became a citizen, and she tutored my dad. So this is what we need to provide lifelong education for our families as well. So as we're educating our families for them to also have certificates or to learn English or to improve their lives, with that is also in direct connection with our students, and they are also reaping the benefits of their families. So we need to look at, from the early education, getting parents into our schools as we're expanding Universal TK, and all the way to adult education. And we can infuse our schools also with these programs, that dual language, magnet, Bravo Medical Magnet, for example, to bring students from other districts, from Alhambra, from Glendale. So we need to see what those parents also want so we can bring them into our district.
All right, we're going to switch topics here, and I was going to start with a little like introduction of like, what are charter schools? But based on the number of questions that are apparently in our Q and A right now, most of you know what charter schools are. So we're going to dive in, Rosio, with this question for you. Four years from now, if you're elected, how many independent charter schools will be operating under LAUSD's oversight? More charters, fewer charters, or about the same number, and why?
Charter school industry is an area, public school system, that we need to have clear oversight and accountability. And that is one area that I bring because I have conducted charter school evaluations. I've studied the, the ideology and the purpose of charter schools. And in four years, it will be less charter schools because I will be looking at the low performing charter schools. Assembly Bill 1505 provided the authority to the district and charter school authorizers to really look and have a, a direct decision on what to do with low performing charter schools, middle to low performing charter schools, middle performing and high performing. So now, what I see is that the charter school industry is replicating the district, is not improving it, it's replicating it. Because we also have district schools that are low performing, middle to low performing, middle performing, and high performing. So what I see is two systems replicating one another. However, our neighborhood public schools are the fabric of our society. They go back generations. So I will not allow one of our neighborhood public schools to close. I will focus on low performing charter schools because they are the ones that we gave them a charter on a promise that they were going to do better. But after one or two years, if they're not performing, I'm sorry. But you have to close, and we have to make sure that those students who are under my jurisdiction have, have the spaces for them to go. Because when you disrupt a child's educational year or life, it has a big imprint on them. And charter schools have closed. There have been at least 20 charter schools that have closed since the inception of charter school, of, of this new law that allowed to provide charter school permission or authorization. So what happened to those schools? So I want to make sure that the charter school division is fully staffed, fully supported, so that it can have direct oversight to all of the schools. So in four years, there will be less schools because all the low performing charter schools, I will make sure I'm addressing them.
So, so charter schools in general, you know, the, the low performing charters are a part of the sector. Most of the schools, at least by the last ratings that were done, about which were low performing and high performing, you know, it, most of the sector doesn't fit that, that bill. So, and I bring that up as only as preface to say, there are going to be a bunch of charter schools that are still around. And the charters that are still around, many of them apply to share school district spaces through colocations, which is a very contentious process. Do you think there's any way to make that process less contentious, feel like less of a zero sum game? Because that's obviously, as you know well, how that kind of feels. Is there a way to like, turn down the temperature on those colocations?
Your colocations were intended to help charter schools to start up. My understanding, it was going to be short term, that once they start, start the one or two years, that they are able to find their own private space. However, we have charter schools who have co-located in our schools for at least 15 years, 10 years, nine years. So that means that that school is, that neighborhood public school is losing so many resources. And it's affecting a division between, I've gone to so many schools, my own school where I went to Hobart Boulevard Elementary School, it's, there's such great divisions. So colocation creates divisions within our students, our parents, our teachers, all the way. And so we need to really make sure that we're having these honest conversations. Because there is this fear of speaking out and saying, oh, no, this, there's this sort of facade that everything is going well, there are no problems. But when I go and I speak to all of the school community within that co-located school, it is not all rosy. So we need to make sure that we're having community impact statements, that that community impact statement, that every single community has the voice, and they are being alerted when there's a co-location coming or a new charter school coming. And that is one weak factor in the charter school division, where the communities are not given the ample time to make their voices known about how the impact of this charter school is going to be. And we also cannot leave it to the administrators to do the work. We have to make sure that the charter school division has the representatives or the staff to go to every single school and let them know, this is what's going to happen. You can organize, you have a voice, and you can come to the board and let them know what this is going to cause. So if we give voice to the community, we change the charter school division policies, and we change the impact of this co-location, then we can really address this. And we do have some charter schools that have space. If we can have charter schools co-locate within themselves, then that can work and leave our neighborhood public schools alone.
Maria, I have the same question for you. Four years from now, if you're elected, how many independent charter schools will be operating in LAUSD's oversight? More, fewer, or about the same, and why?
So I want to begin by being crystal clear on my position on this issue of charter schools. I am a supporter of regulation where it's needed, of accountability and, and transparency. And on the issue of colocation, I have actually challenged those in two particular instances where there were proposed charter school colocations on Eastside School campuses that would have been harmful to the school learning environment and programming and some of the goals that we had set out in our community school strategy at some of, of our schools. And so, you know, Inner City Struggle, and I was right there organizing with students, parents, educators, and community organizations to say, the colocation model does not work in, in our schools. We need this additional space to enhance services, programming, wellness centers, in order to meet the comprehensive needs of our students attending the legacy school, the traditional legacy school. So I, I wanted to, to share that because it is important when we think about charter schools to center student parent voice in terms of what is their vision for their schools and what outcomes do, do they want to see? And so in this conversation, we have to raise that. And what I have heard from students and parents is we need to strengthen accountability, transparency. And what I have heard from students and parents is we need to strengthen accountability, transparency. And I think in this time of decreasing enrollment, as we were discussing, it is not the time to grow, charter schools cannot cannot grow because we need to protect the sustainability of our neighborhood schools and and make sure that long term, they are able to provide educational services in the neighborhoods that they are located. Lastly, I would say, at the same time, in my work as a community organizer, the last 20 years, I know firsthand, we have to meet families and students where they are at. And there are families, in fact, that have children in both systems. And what I've heard them say is that they are looking for an advocate on the Board of Education. They are looking for someone that will listen to their voices and take them into account when it comes to decisions related to charter schools. And that's what I plan to do. I plan to be a representative, if elected, to all families, to all students, regardless of the school that they attend.
Well, wait, how do you square those two things? You that you you feel like there should be fewer charter schools, but also say, I'm going to come up here and also be the voice for people who straddle both systems? I mean, like, it's, it feels like a zero sum game game in many ways. And in many ways, it kind of is a zero sum game between these two, you know, parallel institutions.
Well, what I said is, this is not the time for charter schools to grow. This is the time where we need to look at areas where we strengthen transparency, accountability, regulations that are needed. At the same time, we need to take student and parent voices into account in this ecosystem that now exists in our neighborhoods and uplift our neighborhood schools and make sure they also have the resources that they need to serve our students.
All right, going to move on to make sure that we have enough time to get to just one little bit more topic and a little bit more time here. So Maria, this question, starting with you. In 2020, the LAUSD board members voted to cut the LA School Police Department's budget by 35% and use money cut from that department to start the Black Student Achievement Plan, which created more dedicated services to support black students. Now, the recent death of a student on the campus of a Hollywood high school from a fentanyl overdose prompted figures like LAPD Chief Michael Moore to urge the district to reconsider these cuts. So should LAUSD have police officers on the district payroll? And if so, what should their role be? Maria?
So this issue is very personal to me, being someone that grew up along the US Mexican border and witnessed firsthand the militarization of the border and the overuse of violence, detention, and surveillance on migrants and people that look like me. And my own family was targeted. So in my work at Inner City Struggle and in organizing young people over the last 20 years, I have heard them challenge adults in declaring that safety means dignity, respect, and support, and centering their needs and their voices as it relates to school discipline. And for far too long, LAUSD used punitive measures over surveillance and arrests to deal with school discipline instead of using trauma-informed approaches, restorative justice, and problem solving. That's why, you know, Inner City Struggle and and with my leadership, we advance the Brothers and Selfs Coalition, that is a countywide youth-led coalition that developed the School Climate Bill of Rights and pushed the LAUSD Board nearly 10 years ago to declare itself a district that was going to ban willful defiance-based suspensions, limit the role of school police, and instead put in place alternatives to punitive measures like restorative justice counselors and related programs. And as a result, the district is a better district. More students are graduating, more students, particularly students of color, black students, LGBTQI students, students with disabilities that were overrepresented in suspension rates and expulsion rates feel more included included and safe. And there's more to go. And I I supported the 35% reduction in in the school police. And in its place, we said, we need an alternative program. And that was the Black Student Achievement Program that is having an impact in working with our highest need students. So from my perspective, as an advocate, as a parent, what LAUSD needs to do right now is over invest in its restorative justice nurturing infrastructure. At an aggregate level and at individual schools, trauma-informed approaches, mental health, counseling, and really investing in the relationship building between peers and between peers and adults, and prevent the tragedies that we have recently seen to make sure students who may be dealing with mental health challenges get this support they need in the school. And we have to continue to invest in those strategies.
But does that mean that the district should have school police? Even if even if their role is circumscribed and we're reinvesting in the services, as you suggest, does that still leave a role for any school police officers to be employed by the district?
School, it is not appropriate for school police to play the role of mental health counselors, of guidance counselors, or to engage, they're not trained for that. We need to put the resources in positions, whether it's social workers or school climate advocates, which is one of the positions that was created after the the reduction in in 2020. Those are the kinds of positions that we need to invest in and expand and grow to better support our students.
But could school police officers be used in a security function, a security role of any kind? Hearing your point that like, I don't want them doing, being my my kids' guidance counselor, but could they be there for different security functions?
The role of school police, to answer your original question, is not to engage students in instruction or any other activity that is related to that. And that it will be continue to be my position. We need to invest in restorative justice approaches and in a whole child approach, and it includes school discipline.
Even if it means cut, if that means cutting further from the school police department?
Exactly.
Okay.
And finding other resources to create the infrastructure where we can prevent tragedy, where we can prevent conflict, and make sure students have the support they need to be successful.
Okay. Dr. Reva, same question for you. Does the school district, should it have police officers on its payroll? And if so, what should their role be?
The safety of our schools is of utmost importance. As a parent, my son in middle school, I want him to be safe. And as I drive by our schools and I see our children there and I see moms and dads giving them a hug and, you know, dando la bendición as they go into their school, I feel that fear that I'm saying, I'm sending you the best and I'm hoping that you will come back the same. So we want safety. And we also want safety in our neighborhoods and we want safety in our streets. And as I mentioned before, what happens in our streets is happening in our schools. So we do need safety, we do need law enforcement. However, we need to have strict protocols and parameters as to where law enforcement shall be present. Our administrators or in our teachers, when there is something going on, you know, the first thing they do is call school police. So we need to have protocols on when are the instances that we call school police and when are the instances that we bring in a mental health support team, our PSAs or our PSWs, who when do we refer them to providers that are within our schools? And so there have to be strict protocols on when to call and when not to call. If there is an emergency of a life-threatening emergency, there's lethal or weapon, then yes, there are strict protocols for them to come in. However, I feel and I know that our school police are professionals and they can work on the perimeters of outside and working in special investigations on human trafficking, helping with gang activity and gang intervention, working with law authorities in LAPD, to working with them, to making sure that the, when our students leave our schools, that they're safe, that we have investigations in terms of gun violence. There are way too many guns in our schools. In Lincoln Heights, two young men were shot at a carnival. One of them was a charter school student, one of them was another student in one of our district schools. They were shot in front of all of their students. And this is a problem in our streets. So if we can have community coming together and addressing the gun violence, if we are electing officials that are standing up to gun lobbyists and saying, no, we are not going to continue taking money from you, then we have to be a socially responsible society that we are working together to keep our schools safe. And we can do that with law authority. They're working on these special investigations and they come in and help on specific situations. And yes, we need to make sure that we are disinvesting as much as we can and that we're having, yes, Black Student Achievement Plan, but we also have an Indigenous Achievement Plan, Latino, English Learner Achievement Plan. We have to make sure that all of our students, how you that we're using these resources to help them to build relationships. Our schools have to be based on compassion and care and building relationships. And we're not doing that because we're short-staffed. We don't have time for that because you have to do with what you can. We are, the district tells the administrators, you have to be resourceful with what you have. But many times, the administrators don't have this. And then so they have to rely immediately with law enforcement to help them with something that they cannot deal with themselves. But if we have community schools, if we have our our parents and our teachers and our businesses and we're looking out for each other, we're being socially responsible, then we don't need to rely on law authority to to address the needs of our students because we have those services, because we have those trainings for our teachers, that we have restorative practices. But we have to have restorative practices where administrators, our teachers, and our students, it is integrated in the school climate and environment and in our curriculum that we're using culturally relevant education, where we're talking about these issues. We, there's so much that we need to do to make sure that our schools are safe and compassionate centers. And that's how we keep police out of our campuses and outside, providing for the safety of our students.
So similar follow-up to you as well. Does, I mean, there is a role, is it fewer police officers? Would you would you advocate further cuts to the to the school police department? Is the current staffing level reduced by 35% from its 2020 level? Is that good enough for now? What do you think?
Well, for now, before we make any more cuts, we need to make an analysis, an assessment of the department. So if, like, as I mentioned, if we need a gang activity task force, if we need a human trafficking task, we don't want to over overwork our officers as well because we want them to also address all of these issues, drug overdoses. You know, we need, they need to have that intel that it's in our street, who has the drugs, how are they coming in so they can work together? So we need to make sure we have the staffing and the resources to have those task forces in place and make sure that we are not overspending and that we have the enough for that to happen. So I don't know, it's something that we would have to analyze. I would definitely want to encourage myself and our communities to have this advisory task force, which is one, something I will be implementing, where we're having our labor task force coming in and we're talking to administrators about how we keep our schools safe. And this is something that we have to talk, have a discussion as a as a community and as a society and as a city.
All right. So before we move on to closing statements, I want to go to a few of the questions that have come in from our chat line. And and I'll start with one that, you know, frankly, is is one that it'd be difficult to not talk about this today because of the news that's roiling our city about the city council situation, the racist remarks by those city council members. But of course, what those comments by Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, and Gil Sadio are actually about is the process of redistricting, the redrawing of the maps that that shape both the the city council and LAUSD board districts, which is once every 10 years, the city council president, the mayor, and each LAUSD board member, in the district's case, appoint a 15-member redistricting commission to oversee where to draw the boundaries. I don't need to explain this to either of you. Maria, you were on the city commission, your husband was on the LAUSD commission. Rosio, your current boss, Jackie Goldberg, served on the city council commission. So, you know, I think this has all raised questions about how we draw LAUSD's board districts. And I'm curious to know if you support the creation of an independent commission to draw LAUSD's board districts? And if there are, if if not, are there any other changes that you would support? Maria, why don't we start with you?
Absolutely. We need an independent commission for both LAUSD and the LA city. I would argue, when I served on the LA city redistricting commission, I am proud that I stood my ground and stood by my values of equity and of representation and listening to communities of of interest. That that's, that's the role in redistricting, looking at population and looking at issues of equity as well as listening to communities of interest. And, you know, there was pressure to listen by city council members. And I'm proud I stood with other colleagues to to move forward and try to develop a map that reflected the voices that we were hearing and the public testimony and the data. And so I think it's essential now more than ever that we have an independent redistricting commission for LA overall. And LAUSD also falls under the charter of the the LA city as we know. And yes, you mentioned that my my husband was the chair of the advisory committee for redistricting. Then the map, which was a public map that took into account public testimony and data and was publicly deliberated, was then solidified and approved by the LA city council. But I think to have greater transparency and to ensure the voices of LA city's residents are reflected and LAUSD stakeholders in independent commission is absolutely essential.
Dr. Reva, same question to you. Independent commission for redistricting in the next go-around in 10 years?
Yeah. In order, what what these recordings revealed is something we've always known, is the backroom deals that happen and the appointees that follow the instructions of those backroom deals. And what we saw is a collusion between labor and representatives for their own political power. And they were seeing the working class and different racial groups as just pawns, as this was a political chess game in order to gain their own political power and establishment for their own aspirations. And what really hurts me is that Nuri Martinez was a school-born member and the president of the board. And for somebody who represented on the school board and was there to represent children and families, to hear those words and from all the other board members, of the other city council members hurt me. It made me know that what we see is in our elected officials is not what they are. They say that they're here for the community and the voices, but those backroom deals tells us it is something completely different. It's about political aspirations and political control. And yes, we need commissions that are that are based by citizen oversight. It has to be people, us, the people of Los Angeles, that say what our communities need, not our politicians who want to take as if it's a monopoly game and say, you take the the airport and you take the Coliseum and you take this. We are here, we are a people, we are a city, and we are all integrated. We are a cosmopolitan multicultural city and we all live together. And to be pitting one another for political gain is disgusting. And yes, we need a commission. We need to make sure that those who are appointees are not there for the for the political aspirations for their representatives and that they're there for the people and not for self-interests.
All right. So I've got another question that it just says here, most popular question, and somehow I'm going to have to, I want you to ask you, ask you to answer it quickly. But what is your plan to improve special education in the district? Kids with special needs really suffered during the pandemic. A quick answer to that somehow, Dr. Reva, so we'll start with you.
Time and time again, I've had too many conversations with special education parents and those that even graduated, knowing that they had special education needs and they never received the services. So first of all, we need to make sure that the Congress, that the federal government is fully funding IDEA, that we have at least up to 40%. Right now, they're up to maybe 15 to 20%, depending on how the money is flowing into our schools and the services that we are requiring. So we need to have that 40% met. And we have to really look and looking at the special education department, how are the decisions based? How are the IEPs, the information of the parents being provided? Are we empowering our parents? We need to look at that department, how decisions are being made, and also our parents? We need to look at that department, how decisions are being made, and also have a really in-depth analysis of all the litigation because a lot of, there's a lot of litigation that has to do with special education. And our district is losing a lot of money on that, which means that there's a serious situation that we have to look at in terms of how we are addressing the needs of our special education students. And yes, during the pandemic, they suffered greatly. And I know because I spoke to those parents. And they were, their students, the students with special needs and disabilities, their lives were disrupted. They were not getting the services. So those students, when you're talking about learning loss, those students suffered the most. And yes, I will be making an in-depth analysis of that department and making sure how we're empowering our parents and our students and our teachers. And also at the HR level, we need to speed up the bureaucracy and making sure that we are hiring our special education aides because our students need them. And we need to provide supports to administrators and our teachers because right now they are under stress and they need a lot of help. So I'll be looking at the district level, at the school level, and also at the federal level so we get those funds to our students.
Maria, lightning round. How do you, how do you improve special education? I can't, I can't believe I'm asking you to distill such a huge issue, but here we go.
Yes, and it's one that is very near and dear to my heart, given that I have a child that has an IEP in LAUSD and started with the district at three years old. And I want to recognize that LAUSD has a lot of great strengths when it comes to special education, particularly our educators and the support staff that help our students day in and day out, in the classrooms and in our schools. So I definitely want to acknowledge that, but they need more support and they need more resources. And one of the things that is so hard as a parent of a child with special needs is often at an aggregate level or a policy level, our children are spoken about as burdens, as economic burdens, when in fact, they are our greatest gift and teach us great compassion and teach us so much about humanity and the spectrum of humanity. And if elected, I want to be that, that continued champion as I have been for my own child. And I think IEPs can be tools where we empower families to work with our educators, to set ambitious goals on a realistic timeline and infuse resources. I think class size reduction is absolutely essential to creating personalized learning environments where our special education students can, can thrive. And creating welcoming and safe learning environments for our special education students is absolutely important. And, you know, there was an exacerbated impact because of COVID. So many families felt we were fending for ourselves, supporting our students. So we need to double down and make sure our families are engaged and understand where their children are and work with them to set those high goals. Because I think in the special education context, that's absolutely essential as well.
I just want to acknowledge that this is coming in at the end of the conversation, but we have covered this issue. Our team has covered the, the issues around, surrounding special education, both the issues that get dumped into special education's lap and also, you know, issues that arose during the pandemic, particularly around virtual learning. So make sure that you check out las.com for some of that coverage. It's, it is, you know, truly an important topic and one that's close to my heart as an education reporter. I want to wrap up with, with one very quick lightning round, last question before we move to your closing statements, and that's this from the audience. How will LAUSD Board members keep themselves accountable to their communities, especially when board meetings are at 1:00 downtown? And I live in the valley, according to someone who's, I don't live in the valley, but someone in the, on the, on the livestream is asking. Maria, why don't we start with you? Forty, just a very quick, quick response to that.
Well, in terms of accountability, I understand that really well because for 20 years, I've been working with my community to hold LAUSD decision-makers accountable to be more responsive and more equitable. And it's absolutely important that Bodri and the Board of Education are accessible, that board members are accessible, that board members are at schools, meeting with community members, meeting with young people, families, with community advocates, to listen, to learn, and to get ideas for solving some of our greatest challenges. In my experience, those most impacted by inequities are in the best position to develop innovative solutions, like the Student Equity Need Index, which is a national model of how you fund schools equitably by incorporating academic and community indicators. I think we need to rethink the structure of board meetings, what time they occur, where they occur. I think they should rotate across LAUSD. I think we should have more speaking opportunities so that young people, families in particular, can share their concerns, can share the ideas. So I'm absolutely in support of rethinking the infrastructure of board meetings.
Rosio?
Besides board meetings, I think we need to have town halls. We have to have moments where it's not just rushed and we're giving them two minutes. Because at board meetings, board members cannot or don't really respond to the public comments. But we need to have spaces where we can answer some of those public comments. I know time and time again, I've gone to district meetings where the agenda is already set, but if you have a question, you can go to the side, to the notepads, and you can write down your question and we'll go back to you on those questions. And we know, we never really know if that parent received that question. And a lot of parents are like, well, I would like to have that answer to that question. So we need to have town halls and opportunities where it's a conversation between board members, the superintendent, and the community. So this is something that can be done quarterly, once every, or, you know, quarterly or depending on when we can have these spaces to do that. And during special meetings, special board meetings, or even community, committee meetings, we need to have those opportunities for the, for the public to provide comment. For me, as a board member, I will have those connections through town halls, be it through Zoom, being in person. I love connecting to parent centers. I was a community rep myself at one of my son's schools. And having that space for parents can come and feel welcomed and, and, and providing with those resources and they know that this is their space within a school, then that is where you will see me. You will see me speaking to community reps, going to coffee with the principal. These are the moments that we can connect back to school. Back-to-school events is when all of the parents are there. And this is opportunity to connect with them, to give them your number, give them your, your information. But when it comes to board meetings, we need to have, besides just these board meetings, we need to have other spaces, town halls, that we can hear from the community in an authentic way.
All right. Thank you to you both for your answers to the questions. And we're going to move on now to your closing statements. And we flipped coins beforehand here. And the way it shook out, we're going to start with Rosio. So Dr. Rivas, your two minutes begins whenever you're ready.
Well, I'm very grateful for this opportunity to explain who I am and the trajectory of my life. So as I mentioned, I am a graduate of LAUSD. I received great education. And I've had this vision of creating the schools that we want to create. And as, I want you all to walk with me as we go through our communities right now. And what we see are schools that are covered in asphalt, cement, they're not colorful, they don't have shade. So this is the moment that we need to have transformative institutional change for our schools. We have green, restorative, safe schools. We need to change our schools to climate resilient and greening. Right now, our children are burning up from the ground and from their heads because this climate change is really impacting our schools. And we need to transform this. And I know how to do this because I have been part of a coalition of environmentalists, activists, academics, parents, all that we want to transform our schools basically. And every single school, we can change that. In our schools, as they become more green, we are addressing the mental health and the healing of our schools. And this is how we also bring in back the vibrancy of our schools in this district, is by transforming our schools. And I have this key ability and perspective, which is public policy. I've gone throughout the world. I've gone to Bolivia, I've gone to Georgia, the Republic of Georgia, and I've looked at global policy implementation and also the implementation of policies here in our public institutions and also in charter schools. So I am a person who is going to keep both systems accountable because I am not taking money from the charter school industry. And I'm only aligned to the working class and to the people of Los Angeles. And we need to provide for all that they need. And our public institutions and our representatives must do better.
Thank you, Dr. Rivas. Ms. Brennis?
Thank you. And I want to address the audience, for District 2 voters and, and communities, because this is an important conversation. And there is so much at stake for the students and families in our schools because they're impacted by decisions made by the school board. I want to emphasize my track record over the last 20 years of being an active listener and collaborator with community, listening to young people, listening to families and about their concerns and what changes they want to see in their schools and in their neighborhoods, whether it was overcrowded conditions, inequitable school funding, lack of college access, lack of sufficient health services on a campus, or not enough resources. I have listened and worked with my community to help solve some of the biggest challenges facing LAUSD traditional public schools. There is a need for leadership that operates with urgency and in collaboration with those most impacted by education. I know that I'm a leader for this time of great challenges facing our district, including academic challenges facing students, particularly our highest-need students, declining enrollment, as we've talked about, with some schools being highly impacted and decreasing engagement of our highest-need families. The solutions that I have helped advance, new LAUSD traditional public schools, more wellness centers on our campuses, breakfast programs for all of our highest-need students to be in the classroom, equitable school funding, and the end of punitive school discipline. This is the type of leadership I bring that is solution and equity focused. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much to both of you. My sincere thanks to both of you for being here and for answering the questions, not only from me and our news organization, but from our audience out there. This conversation to all of you out there has been part of our voter game plan, our newsrooms guide to help you make an informed vote ahead of the November election, as I mentioned at the beginning of this event. You can read that guide now at las.com/vote. You can see profiles on the candidates, learn more about what each position does, and see information about campaign finance as well. So las.com/vote. Be sure to join us tomorrow evening as well. That's when, if you're not just a BD2 fan, but you want to know what's going on in LAUSD Board District 6, the other active general election race in the school district this November, that's the East Valley race. You can join us tomorrow night at 7:00. So for all of us at KPCC, and thank you again to Maria Brennis and to Dr. Rosio Rivas. And thank you again to all of you for joining us and have a good afternoon.